I will call this evening's meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here and at home who are joining, that's joining us on the Channel 7, and welcome our new commissioners who came back, so I guess we didn't scare y'all too bad last week. Tonight's meeting consists of the consent agenda, which is the minutes from the last meeting. We then have the final plat, actually, one, two, three, four final plats, all involved with the Parkway Estates PRO. Then we will have a capital improvement program, presentation by staff, other business, and we will adjourn. And I will remind everyone, after we adjourn, we do have liability training. All right, that being said, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved, tell me, approved the minutes of the last meeting?
Second.
I'm a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the final plat. We will hear all of these together, and we will vote on them all together, please. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before this evening is a request for, as you noted, five, excuse me, four separate final plats totaling forty-seven lots. You can see the shaded area here is the area in question, east of Adams Street Parkway, north of Mullen School Road, and west of and including Monterey Drive. These are the ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth plats for Parkway Estates, a single-family residential subdivision. And just to give a little bit of background, you can see here, the gray shaded area has some white holes in it, lack of a better term. The gray area is the area being proposed for plating, which is before you this evening. And as noted in the staff report, page three of six, it does state that only those lots that drain westward are requested to be platted at this time because the stormwater management systems controlling all eastward water flow have yet to be completed. The proposed final plats, however, as they're laid out, the individual lots, streets, do not deviate from the previously approved PRO plan or the preliminary plats. So the applicant is looking just to plat a portion of each of these areas, these cul-de-sac lots that extend westward off of Monterey Drive. Furthermore, as you heard, an area to the, to the west of Adams Street Parkway, north of Mullen School Road, at the last meeting was a request to vacate three separate drainage easements. That is not going to be necessary in these lots with this request, so just kind of a FYI. This is the last step in order to make these buildable lots, so there's no further easements or anything else that need to occur specifically related to drainage before they can move forward with construction of homes. Just referencing again, stormwater management, there's some commentary again, more specific to that in staff report, along with sidewalks, again, since only doing portions of these cul-de-sacs, the streets themselves are in, they are constructed, and what this does is formally plat or dedicate those roadways. So the roads will be in, but the sidewalks again will come in even more separate pieces than you may typically see with new subdivisions. Applicant also intends to develop the common area, which is kind of behind east of the water tower and the CJC facility. They're looking to, I guess, address that with the next phase, which is when the rest of the eastward draining lots would also come in. So it's really just the lots themselves and no common area that's being addressed before you this evening of these plats. Furthermore, and finally, staff suggests that the elevations, the drawings that were included in your packet for each of the individual building types be administratively approved through the building permit process. Again, these, again, staff's estimation are improvements, at least in terms of variety, in terms of different types of housing and material that is placed on each of those individual units. It's improvement over the originally approved plan, so staff is requesting that those just be administratively approved as they go forward with building permits. With that, staff does recommend approval with three conditions, and I'll certainly stand for any questions before the applicant comes up to respond to any questions you may have as well.
Do we have any questions for staff?
These are all single, single-family dwellings?
Yes, yes, all of them are single-family detached units, exactly.
I did notice, Mr. Allen, that on one of the home plans, one of the ranches, I only see two bedrooms. These are all going to be three bedrooms? Question mark?
I believe so. I will defer to the applicant to confirm that, though. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
One question.
Mr. Abbott?
When we, did we, had we previously approved this through a former builder a few years ago?
Just the PRO final plan and the preliminary plats, but not?
Was there a square footage minimum or anything like that?
Yes, there was. And I'm going to look over to Mr. Holly, perhaps, to help with that.
Yeah, this was before you were for some modifications to the previous owner, as you noted, about a year ago or so.
Mr. Allen, you might want to use, try the other microphone, we're not getting?
Is it not coming through at all?
We're not getting a green light here.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think I had a problem talking loudly, so hopefully that helps. All right.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I'm not sure what the problem was with that one. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mr. Holly is looking up the, this, thank you. Sixteen hundred square feet, class F.
So we're still at that?
It's still at the same as it was previously, exactly.
I was just curious, because you really don't see too many homes with two-car garages anymore, so just.
Good point, yeah, these are, these are smaller lots. Again, they're a little bit narrower. This is the smallest lot configuration of this part of Parkway Estates on the east side.
And that's correct, it's actually class G.
Class G?
Yeah, these are classified.
Fourteen hundred, that, you're right, that does sound right, fourteen hundred, thank you. So again, yeah, these are smaller lots as well, and I'm sure the?
That's what we approved originally?
Yes. Well, that's, was that modified?
No, that was the original.
Thank you. Thank you, yes. This is originally called the Villas, as you can see, this isn't technically villa-style housing, that's why I did mention that staffers recommended they just be, these elevations be approved administratively, since it is a little bit different building type, but obviously does still fit on with the minimum classification and on the lots, lots themselves.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and do a presentation or explain some of his project to us?
My name is Randy Salee, my corporation is Salee Homes Incorporated, and actually, through the advice of my attorney, I guess it's, this, we've set up an LLC, at least to purchase the lots, and we plan on selling the lots to my building company. And when we first looked at this project, we, the attraction for us was a different, a different square footage minimum home, number one. And number two, probably, obviously, it being, it was a bank-owned property, and that was the other attraction, is the price was right. But our first, and there were two previous elevations, I never did see a floor plan necessarily of the different style homes that were proposed to be built, I only saw a couple of elevations that were presented through the original builder slash developer. And what we wanted to do is, we wanted to develop some new floor plans that will be, hopefully, affordable to folks in the area, still nice, nice elevations, and so we sat down with Webster Architects, and we designed and developed three different style of homes. Two of the homes that you'll see are two-story homes, the other one is a ranch villa-type home. And the question about two bedrooms versus three bedrooms, what we're trying to do as far as the, as far as the single-story home, is we're in our model home, we will build the main floor, and then we'll have a third bedroom and the basement level along with the rec room, and that will be optional to the people who want to buy, who are looking to buy there. Our plan right now initially is to, is to build three model homes and three speculative homes, and I believe we've developed three to four different elevations for each home, and similar, kind of a similar marketing plan of what we have done in South Development in Eagles Ridge, where we have a model row, and then we sell and build off of the model row that's built within the community and stay there for as long as it takes to be able to build out the community. And so, that being said, if there are questions about the plans or about anything that we are about to do, you know, I'd be happy to answer questions, and what we're trying to do is react, kind of restart the community, I guess, and we would like to build not only on the east side, but on the west side, that, on the bank-owned lots also, if that's, but our project now, of course, that we're most interested in is getting that east side rejuvenated.
Fourteen hundred square foot minimum, are your homes going to be fourteen hundred, or are you going to go up?
I think the plans that, that we're finalizing now are the, for instance, one of the two-story homes that you'll see here has an area over the garage. The areas that are going to be on the main floor and the bedroom area will be the fourteen hundred square foot minimum. The optional area that'll be over the garage, we'll take those up into the probably sixteen, seventy-hundred square footer size. We'll be at or above that fourteen hundred square foot. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to sit here and promise two thousand square feet on each home, because that probably won't happen. But obviously, if people expand and make the homes larger than what our models are, we want to do that, we want to sell more square footage if we can, but we also want to keep the price point at a price that people can afford to.
Well, then I assume that the ranch that, that the floor plan I'm looking at that has the two-bedroom, that two-bedroom is the fourteen hundred?
It is.
And it does not include the basement finish out?
Correct.
Correct?
It does not include the basement finish out. Yeah, the basement finish out will probably be, it's probably somewhere in the area of another four hundred to five hundred square feet down, and then the rest unfinished. So that could take us up into the eighteen or nineteen hundred square foot total.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant?
Manager.
Ms. Banks?
Mr. Salee, what range do you think this place needs to be?
It is hard to say right now.
Where do you?
A range, kind of depends on, we have plans that are almost finalized from Webster, and we'll send those out for bid. We are thinking probably in the one sixty to one ninety range is probably where we're at, or where we'll be at. And again, I hate to, hate to start pricing things, yeah, before I, before I get bids back, because I can say this, too, in the market that we're in, believe it or not, prices are starting to decline, and that's coming from lumber prices and from a lot of subcontractor prices, and, and it all begins, of course, with what your, what your price your lots at, and, but anyway, that's probably in that, I tell you, our thought on this was every starter home community that we see over the past several years has always been either a split entry, raised ranch, some kind of a buy level. What we tried to do with these plans is we tried to incorporate the features that are in a higher-priced home, just not on as, as large of a square footage footprint. So we're trying to give a buyer who needs a first-time home, or maybe, maybe they're selling an older home in Blue Springs, they want to stay in the community, trying to give him, give them all the features that they're looking for, but not make the footages as large as what the other houses are. And that was one of the emphasis that we set when we sat down with Kathleen and Dan at Webster Architects, is that we wanted to incorporate nice features, we just don't need it to be as, as large as what a lot of homes have. And our plan was not, is also, wasn't to do any buy levels or split levels, because we kind of feel like, we, I don't know, we feel like the market's changed, and we're hoping that it's more either ranch-style or two-story buyers. That's not to say that if we don't, if these plans are not working, that we won't come back and maybe present to staff a variation of maybe a one-and-a-half story home, if we think there's a market for that.
So there won't be the raised ranches and?
We have no plans for raised ranches or split entries or buy levels right now, at all.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I will tell you, I'm going through the covenants, I like seeing the, you know, renting on that, I appreciate that very much. I think your covenants are well-done.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair? The motion we approved, file number PF4123405, PF4123406, PF4123407, PF4123408, with the three conditions. Second?
I'm a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our CIP presentation, Mr. Holly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, pardon? And I understand this is the good mic today. We are happy to present to you the 2012-2013 to 2017-2018 Capital Improvement Program. As you know, the, I always like to start out by, by thanking several people, individuals who were involved with the CIP, and that, that would be the rating committee and commissioners Mark Prozen and Ginger Duhon, we're very much appreciative. Mark, this is second year for you, and Ginger, is this the second year for you, or is this the first?
Second.
That's what I was thinking, it was both the second time, very much appreciated, thank you. Also, city council members Ron Fowler, Jeff Kabel, and Kent Edmondson. Jeff, I know you're here, and I think it's several years for you as well, huh? Much appreciated. You'll see this again Monday the ninth, I think it is. Parks Commissioner Bill Landrum was on the rating committee this year, and then we also want to thank the city administration, Public Works, Parks, Police, and a special thanks to Finance, who really puts the numbers together for us and helps us a lot with that. CIP is being submitted in accordance with the city charter. The 2012, 2013, 2017, 18 projects and budget are consistent with past CIP budgets. There are a few changes which we will go over, but for the most part, it is very consistent with our past budgets. Projects, again, are grouped into the funded and unfunded projects, and the majority of projects, again, this year provide either maintenance or rehabilitation. Total number of projects, we'll go through some numbers kind of quickly, but if you have questions afterwards, we'll certainly answer them. We have seventy-five projects this year, twenty-six of which are funded, and forty-nine which are unfunded. The projects that will carry forward this year, the public safety building remodel and construction, BF18, you will possibly remember that from last year, when they combined three projects with this building into, into one larger remodel and construction project. The ambulance, street rehabilitation program, snowplow and dump truck, street difference, sidewalk repair and maintenance program, a new program that started last year. Citywide maintenance for sanitary sewer systems, the rubber tire backhoe, sludge removal, the hydraulic excavator miscellaneous water maintenance, and the water tank maintenance. The total budget for the funded and unfunded this year is one forty-four point seven million. You'll see some different numbers in the actual draft report, that is, we'll talk a little more about that later, but the draft report is incorrect right now. It compares to a hundred and fifty point two million that was proposed and adopted in 2010, and a hundred and sixty-two point six million that was adopted in 2011. The total of the funded projects for the six-year period is forty-two point eight million, and it represents twenty-nine point six percent of the total six-year budget, that's including both the funded and the unfunded projects. Total cost of the unfunded projects for the six-year period is about one hundred and one point eight million, and the projects proposed to be funded for 2011-2012 year totals approximately fifteen million, and that represents approximately thirty-five percent of the total funded projects for the six-year CIP. This is a photo of a street rehabilitation along Fifteenth and Main and Walnut from last year's budget, I'm sure you've all been down that road, it's a popular street. The public safety building, BF18, in April of 2011, the citizens approved a half-cent sales tax, and you may recall, last year, we saw two projects, they were PS01 and BF18. PS01 is not in this year's CIP, because that project is started, funding was approved for it last year, so they are working on the communication system as we speak. A new tower is currently being erected out off of Colburn Road, if you're out there, you might take a look, I'm sure you'll see that, and the radio system themselves also are in process. The project that is in this year's budget is BF18, and we spoke a little bit about that, and I won't go into a lot of additional detail, but that's the combined project, three projects for this building. Approximate funding for that, for both projects, is about fifteen point one million. The 2003 comprehensive plan update last year, and in the past several budgets, was proposed for year 2013-2014, that has been moved up one year to 2012-2013, that's this upcoming year. So you will be seeing the comprehensive plan coming before you in the next fiscal year, rather than two years. The last completed comprehensive plan was in 2003. The area plan occurred in 2004. In 2009, there was a minor update to the comprehensive plan, which really folded the area plan in with the 2003 comprehensive plan and created the MIP as a designation within the plan. That was basically what that update accomplished. Total funding for the comprehensive plan is two hundred and twenty thousand. Community development block grant, I mentioned earlier that the funding that is in the actual CIP draft document, the numbers are wrong, one of the reasons is because just last Monday, the city council approved a proposed consolidated plan, that plan still goes forward, as I understand it, to the HUD, is that correct? And then once HUD approves it, it goes back to the council, is that correct?
No, it's a thirty-day draft period.
Okay, okay. With the consolidated plan, one of the programs that was proposed is to utilize a hundred thousand dollars for a facade improvement program. When you combine, when you combine the facade renovation program along with the first-time home buyers and minor home repair, that leaves less than fifty thousand dollars for the fiscal year twelve, thirteen. So you will see that there are no CDBG funds, that removed a hundred and twenty thousand from the total, and that's the difference that's, that you don't see in the draft report, and I will point out at the end of this meeting where those changes will occur, but it's primarily just in the graphs. The numbers in the staff report were all changed. CDBG funding for, it will resume in fiscal year 2013-14 and continue through 2717 and 18 at approximately a hundred and twenty thousand a year, unless something changes again. The annual street and sidewalk rehabilitation program, which is STO6 and 44, it provides, again, two point three million for street rehabilitation and two hundred thousand for sidewalk repair. Some of you may remember that two point five million was originally set aside for street rehabilitation, and last year, when they looked at sidewalk repair, they pulled two hundred thousand of that out, which is why it's now two point three million. The, the change in the street and sidewalk rehabilitation program, and I'm sorry, it's really the street rehabilitation program, is that in fiscal year 2013 to 14, those funds will be applied to the? to the Woodschapel Road Phase II project in order to provide the matching grant funds as well as make up some additional costs that go along with that. And we can talk a little bit more about that in a minute when we talk about the Woodschapel project. But then in fiscal year 2014 and 15, through the remainder of the six-year CIP, it reestablishes those fundings for ST-06 at $2.3 million again. The sidewalk rehabilitation program, and that $200,000 continues throughout the entire CIP budget. Total funding for street rehab for the six-year CIP is $11.5 million, and for the sidewalk rehab program, it's $1.2 million. Now we can talk a little bit about Woodschapel Road. The improvements are on schedule. I'm sure many of you have been out along Woodschapel Road and see that they are doing construction. It's moving along quickly, we're told. The construction began in this fiscal year, 2011-2012, and is anticipated to continue through fiscal year 2013-14. The current plan has consolidated three phases of a project into one, and that's ST-19. And that phase is roughly from Briarwood Castle Drive north through, and Oliver is here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that takes it north through Jefferson Street along Woodschapel. Then the new project, which is ST-29, takes Woodschapel from Briarwood Castle through Walnut Street. And the difference between those two projects is that ST-19 is funded through the, through the bond issue that was passed in 2008, but ST-29 is not. ST-29 is funded through a grant from the Mid-America Regional Council as well as the city putting in some additional funds, not only the matching funds for the grant, but some additional funds beyond that. Total project cost is $5 million. And I'll let Oliver talk about the funding and how that actually works. But the city will be putting in, I think, roughly $2.6 million of that. My numbers may be a little off here, but $2.6 million, and then I think Mark will match the rest or provides a grant for the rest. The approximate remaining budget for the two projects is $7 million. That does not count the $6 million that was allocated last year to that particular project. So the total project cost is approximately, for Woodschapel Road, is approximately $13 million, big project. And there's a photo of Woodschapel Road construction. And just to remind you of some of those bond, bond road construction. Moreland School Road, which occurred in 2010-2011. Most of you have probably been on that, that is a great, great cut-through road. The intersection of Southwest 7th Highway and Colburn Road, if you haven't been down there, is completed and was completed much earlier this summer. That was a 2011-2012 project funded by the bond issue. And then the final one, of course, the one that's occurring now, is Woodschapel Road. So all projects that were included with that bond issue are either completed as the voters were originally told, or are in process as the voters were originally told. So that's a really good thing. Another project that has come about is the Tri-County Feed Line Project, WA-09. Originally, and last year on the CIP, you'll notice the Pink Hill Feed Loop Project was anticipated. That project was anticipated based on increased development in the northeast portion of town. That development, of course, has slowed with the economy change tremendously. So in looking at the water needs of the city, they, when I say they, I say Public Works has looked at that, and based on our water needs right now, the Tri-County Feed Line is a more important project to us at this particular point. It provides a trunk line along northeast Jefferson Street to a 16-inch transmission main on Adams Dairy Parkway, and it allows the city to access about 5 million gallons of water if necessary. Without that project, we could still access some of the water, but not the total of 5 million. So Oliver, I'm sure, can explain that better than I, but the bottom line is, is it allows us access to additional and more water if we were to need it, and where we need it. Total cost of that project is approximately $1.2 million. The AA lift station abandonment has been on the CIP. It's been on the funded and the unfunded portion. It was moved to unfunded last year because the project wasn't, for the gravity sewer line, wasn't quite ready to go, and because it didn't seem to be a priority at the time. However, in rethinking that, it is being proposed to be moved back on the funded list. It involves construction of an 8-inch gravity sewer line. As you know, whenever you can eliminate a pump station and directly sewer through gravity, you are helping yourself by reducing maintenance costs and providing really long-term cost efficiencies with the gravity line.
Where is that?
That is proposed.
Where is that?
The AA lift station, Oliver?
It's behind the new Blue Springs School that's ranked.
Transportation yard.
Behind the new bus barn?
It's to the south of the bus barn, it comes out of the central tracks, and it ties into the system.
All right, thank you.
Some utility relocation going on along Woodschapel Road, you may have noticed that. That's one of the first steps to getting into the construction. Proposed new projects to be funded. There was only one proposed new project this year to be put on the funded list, and that was northeast Napoleon Drive. It's the construction of the first 800 linear feet of Napoleon Road. The construction is required as part of a purchase agreement for the land on the east side of Napoleon, and it's the catalyst for the MIP. The approximate cost is $800,000, and you will see there is $400,000 in year 2012-13, and then an additional $400,000 in 2013-2014 when the road is to be constructed. There were two projects that were proposed that were placed on the unfunded list. The Public Works Asset Management Software. I won't go through reading all of this, but the short of it is, is that the current asset management program that we have is old, and it's no longer serviceable. When they do their water and sewer rate study, they will determine whether they can move forward and when they can move forward with the asset, with the new asset management software. I don't think it's a question of if, it's a question of when. It's just not ready right now. And Gregory O. Grounds Park signage Phase I. Again, I won't go through it at all there, but the bottom line is, is that there is no formal signing at Greg Grounds Park right now, particularly the wayfinding portion of it. There are some Missouri Department of Conservation signs that are out there, but they really don't get you to and from the different places within the park. This particular proposal sets up a sign program that will, that will, again, provide wayfinding through the park. This is Ward Park Trail Replacement. If you haven't been to Ward Park, it's a good park to visit, and the trail replacement there really came out well. Planning Commission's action tonight to ensure compliance with the comprehensive plan, and staff believes that all projects are in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and you do have a copy of those pertinent sections of the comprehensive plan that were provided with staff report. And then if you have any comments that you would like to provide to the City Council, I will record those, and we will make sure that they are passed along in the City Council's staff report. So if there are any questions, we will stand for questions, and I think we have, both the Assistant City Administrator Todd Pelham is here, and Oliver DeGreat, Caesar Yanis, Public Works, are here as well.
I have a question.
Mr. Holly?
Yeah, Mr. Holly. Back on the Woodschapel Road update, ST-29, which you say is not funded. That's the one that goes from Woodschapel Road all the way to Walnut. Is there going to be any public hearings on that or anything before it's funded? Or is that past that point?
Oliver, do you want to?
We've already had public meetings, and then we've already had meetings with the.
If you would, please, I don't think anyone at home is able to hear.
We've already had public meetings here at the public safety facility, as well as several meetings with the Tapawingo Development Corporation for that project.
The reason I bring that up is, I live in that area, right there off of Woodschapel, and I'm taking a lot of heat, especially from my wife. Our lot is a cul-de-sac that corners right up to Woodschapel, and I'm losing four square feet on my lot, which is, that's no problem. But what the guy came out with and showed me the drawings was cutting down all those big trees, like four or five big trees, just right along the road there. And that's the first time that I looked at those drawings, and it's probably my fault for not coming to the public hearing.
Yeah, we've had the public hearings, Commissioner.
And then the roundabout up at Walnut, I was not aware of that.
In addition to the four square feet, we're also asking 90 square feet of temporary easement off of your lot. But the answer to the question regarding the alignment of the roadway is, even if the storm sewer was moved to the west, the curb and grout intersection would still require those trees to be cut down in addition to the compaction of the root system inside the drip line because of the reconstruction of the road. So it's impossible not to take those trees down. It's impossible to realign it, that road, the new roadway, and move it farther to the west. If we take the roadway and move it to the east, then a similar number of trees on the east side are going to be removed. So that's why the alignment's been set for the roadway in the way it has.
Other questions for staff?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Mr. Holly and commend him for his efforts, as well as all the city staff. Serving on this committee is very easy because they prepare the information far in advance, give us opportunity to review it, and once we come together as a committee, you know, all the information's in place, and it makes it relatively easy to start ranking these projects. So I'd just like to thank them as well.
Very good. I have a question about the CDBG funds, of course. In this, it says that with the projects, it reduces the available funds to less than $50,000. Are those funds also earmarked?
If you'd like, I can answer.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. The, again, the $50,000 is a threshold to go into the CIP, and in this case, there are no actual capital projects, physical projects, that are being proposed in the next fiscal year to justify putting it into the CIP. So there's still funds, but primarily for programs, some downtown rehabilitation and such, but not physical, public, infrastructure-type improvements that you've seen in the past.
All right. I know that after we had the function this weekend downtown Blue Springs, one of the comments that I got from numerous people, as I walked around, talked to all the vendors and such, their concerns for the sidewalks, particularly down, like in front of the Mercantile Store, down at that end of town, but all the way through town. We had a couple people trip during that function. So I'd like to see some of those, and I know that Dr. DeGreat and I have had conversation concerning parking lot and sidewalks, and have ongoing conversation, but I just wanted to make sure staff was aware that, you know, those things are being pointed out to us, and it'd be nice if we could address, and I know our money's tight.
Sure, yes, and they are, they have been identified, as you know, Madam Chair, but they, for this next year, they fall under that $50,000 mark, which, yes, does make it seem like it's not very significant. And it's about $38,000, I think is what we have in there for sidewalks, perhaps some streetlight expansion, things like that. But it's just a piece before, maybe in future years, and that's why, as Jim had noted, the following, the future years, we still show some funds for those capital projects. It's just this next year, we have changed course just slightly.
The other thing is, I want to make a comment about getting the Mark Grant for the ST-29, which I think is wonderful. I do, I'm curious, more than anything else, we have $70,000 for signs in Gregory Grounds Park? $70,000?
Yeah, at this point, that.
That's a lot.
That is a lot, it is.
Does it cost that much to make signs?
Well.
I have some posts in store.
There is a sign program, and that program was developed, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was Ashner Herr and Herr that developed that program. And the $70,000 includes a really signature monument sign that is on Duncan Road, and will be coordinated with some of the other park improvements that will occur off of Duncan Road. And then the rest of the wayfinding, there are secondary signs that are also monument-type signs that occur at Jefferson, one, I think, occurs at the corner of Jefferson and Adams Dairy Parkway, and another one, then, is down near where the lake entrance is currently, and then the wayfinding signs. And $70,000, it does, that sounds like a lot of, a lot of money for signs.
Well, if they're monument, I can understand that.
And all of the signs within the park, these are more of a signature-type sign, so they're not just your standard wood pole and crossbar-type signs. And it was to try to, you know, stay in keeping with what we hope Greg Grounds Park to be in the future.
And then I have, I do have a question, which is not related to this specifically. The park benches that have been put out along some of the sidewalks, Moreland School Road, 19th Street, did those come out of the CDBG money? Do we know?
I don't.
No, those would not, if it's in those areas, because those are geographically limited funds for the street improvements that you're referring to, streetscape. So I'm not sure where that funding came from.
I mean, they're nice park benches, and they're used.
I'll take credit for it. Sure, Public Works would be happy to take credit for it.
Oh, Stone Creek Hway, very good.
They put the one out on Moreland School Road also?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, just one other clarification.
Yes, Mr. Allen.
With the CDBG clarification, we're currently in the 30-day review process for the Annual Action Plan, so if anybody does have comments about the projects that are being proposed, need to get those in before, I think it's like July 20th, something like that, around that week in July. And then it goes before the City Council, August 6th, for their final review and approval before they're submitted to HUD by August 15th. So it's just started this last Saturday, so there's pretty much full four weeks here. If you do have comments, certainly get them my way, and we'll certainly present those and provide those to council.
Mr. Treusen?
Just a point of clarification on the signs. That also includes the installation of those signs as well.
Oh, yes, yes.
So that would be an additional cost as far as the labor to install those signs.
That's correct.
And the quality of the signs are top-notch as far as for the respect of that park, so. Versus just a cardboard sign on a stick.
Any other comments, questions for staff? As usual, you all have done an excellent job, thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you. Put this down and get ready for the next presentation.
All right. That brings us to other business. Mr. Allen, did you have anything to be brought to board of commission?
I do not, other than thank you to all those who, again, to those who attended the June 13th workshop. It was very well attended, we had 35 participants. They're already putting together their final report, they're calling it a technical memo, their final report on the workshop. So they'll be putting a lot of information out on the CNU website, Congress Renewalism website. And Karen is, I can't read lips very well, so she can certainly feel free to speak up. Sorry?
The survey?
Yes, survey, thank you, yes. If you've not filled out the survey online, that was emailed to you if you gave your email address and signed in and registered. Please be sure to do that, they did not get a lot of responses. The responses they got were, had a lot of good comments, so more comments, we can get the better, it'd be great. Helps them up, obviously, as they move forward, but also helps us if there's some unfinished business or comments from that. But good overall attendance, appreciate everyone who was there. And if you weren't unable to attend, like I said, we'll have some information on their website here, hopefully this week, and then kind of a memorandum wrap-up here in the next couple of weeks.
Very good, as always. As always, again, it was a very good presentation, time well-spent. Any other business? I wanted to remind everyone that this Friday at 10 o'clock, the Train Depot will be moving through down Main Street. We'd love to have everyone here and everyone in town to come out and join us. It's 10 o'clock. Hopefully, it'll be up on wheels and moving at 10 o'clock. That's the goal. All the two and a half blocks that we're going to cover, and we'll all be in Central Park. We'll have cookies for everybody, and would like to see everyone come out and celebrate that. All right. Any other business? Seeing none, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.